Yes.
Applause.
The United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, in this world, with the peace and blessings of all.
Hi, good evening everyone, we have full council. Relatively short agenda, so let's get started. First is from June twenty eighth.
I have one question for. I'm just not sure, I don't think we would have. What was? Why didn't she? I think it says that in July twenty eighth. I wasn't sure if it was July.
This was silver one, it was the second year of that. That's.
That's what we did last night. I just wanted to make sure that. And when you're not.
You are good otherwise.
Yes.
If anyone else changes the.
I will to set it down, house in two twenty eight, two thousand. Second.
Motion for the second, any other discussion? All those who favor moving this move for me, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Many.
There's next, and we had to do one on June thirty, we just didn't have the.
As you know, we signed the treasures warrant about two hundred and five thousand three hundred fifty three dollars, sixty nine cents, dated six thirty, twenty twenty two.
Your motion for the second, any discussion? All those who favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Chair, we signed the treasure warrant about one hundred thirty thousand three hundred seventy seven dollars, ten cents, dated seven six, forty twenty two.
This is probably.
We have a motion from John. Motion for the second. All those who favor saying the first one was worth from July. Any opposed? Unopposed, motion passed by you.
Chair, we signed the treasures warrant about eight hundred and eighty eight thousand five hundred seventy three dollars, ninety seven cents, dated seven state.
Good motion in the second, any discussion?
This does include school payment of seven hundred twenty eight thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars, eighty six cents.
There's the new level.
After you knew you were.
Close.
Seven oh three ish.
All right, we have a motion for the second, any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For our communication to involve here is. D two thousand and three, I don't know if there's any, is there any setup you want to do on this?
Um, well, after we got word that bill had passed. Vice Chair Council practice has asked that we set up a meeting and meet with Paul to get kind of like. An overview of how little the Patrick community and so forth, which myself and Jack did. And speaking with Vice Chair after the presentation. Jack comes around me that we should present this information to all council, so that it's all public, so everybody can see it. No, we don't. So I asked Paul to come do a short presentation, answer the question. We can at least get the council and myself in the public to make education on what this.
Great, um, well, um, now, um, why don't you just speak, I'm gonna keep myself in it, um, can I share my screen? That's so that people can share, but I'm not sure.
Vibe somewhere.
Have to share a screen.
If we can't hear, we can turn the AC off. Well, we maybe should set.
Because yeah, then to share a screen. There we go.
Real quick, sorry, for anyone on the phone, Paul, sorry, for anyone on the phone, Paul's presentation is also not included in our supporting.
Why did you say possible? This works, I may have to go over it.
It's like, all right, but yeah, um, okay, well, thank you, let me just get the slides up and I know people. So. All right, great, um, so thanks again, I'm Paul Schumacher, I know you folks from Southern Planning and Development Commission, I just want to sort of go through the basics of LD two thousand and three. Which was made, well, it's called a, it's not actually called Affordable Housing Bill, it was just basically the official title was Increase Housing Opportunity in Maine. So I think, I'm even familiar with the basics, it was approved by the governor in April. Purposes to increase housing opportunities, I think the thought behind it was more housing, we could sort of generate, create. That. More, that will help just generate more housing, obviously, and hopefully drive the prices of housing down. It requires municipalities to allow certain housing types and densities, and we're gonna go through that, officially takes effect now. But, uh, a tiny days. But the requirements don't need to be adopted or any changes to your zoning until July first of two thousand twenty three, so basically a year. But as you look at some of the things that need to be done, it's probably worthwhile to start thinking about that now. Because there are a lot of decision points which all go through. I think the important, one of the important factors here is to. There's still room making they need to do at the state level. Because it is sort of a complex law, I'm not totally sure what that means, maybe you folks have a better idea. But that needs to be done, that has not been done, so it might help provide some clarity on all the different types of things that are going on here. But that, I think, is gonna start to take place right now. I think the easiest way to think about this is it is a complex piece of legislation, is to break it up into three different. Street components, and I'm gonna go through all these, but one is affordable housing density, the long-term requirements for affordability. I think that's more like what people generally think of as far as affordable housing. There's a component of it, which I think created sort of the most amount of sort of impossible confusion and. Which I think is gonna be somewhat difficult throughout your house, hands around about increasing density, just through zoning and other things, and then there's an accessory dwelling. Track itself or does that to a certain extent. And that's important now. So on the affordable housing piece, I think we've been saying to towns. That this is like what you, people normally think of as affordable housing, I mean, it's gonna be, there's gonna be density bonuses, and I think people even read this, I don't need to go through it. But whatever your base density is, if it's a ten thousand square foot lot size, we can get two and a half times that density in an area. They reduce the parking requirements, it's gotta be in an area that allows for multifamily dwellings. And the critical part about a lot of this for South Broadway is gonna be, it's gotta be in a designated growth area for your comprehensive plan, or areas served by public water and public sewer, so that's four. For South Broadway, your comprehensive plan is, it was consistent, it is not no longer consistent, because it's elapsed. After twelve years. From the state letter to you, so. You know, until you get a new comprehensive plan, you're basically looking at an area designated for, or for to public water and sewer as an area that would be added density. For affordable housing project, and actually on the next one, I'll talk about. Then there's other things that, um, you know, he, this, if somebody wants to do a project, needs to serve public water and sewer, that they need to sign off, etc., etc. But this is an affordable housing. Developer. Which a lot, most towns don't. Get a lot of, a lot of towns already permit that, or have rules and regulations that permit more affordable housing with density bonuses. But we've been talking to people and our attorney, there's a lot of work throughout your Commonwealth County and. You don't see a lot of that type of development going on, they, for various reasons, but. I'm not saying to worry, I don't, you know, I don't think it's something that you're gonna need to adopt these rules. But I, it would not, I wouldn't see a lot of action here, I don't think. Um, the increased density requirement is sort of the big one that I think South Broadway needs to spend some time on. So basically, if you have a vacant lot. Not served by water or sewer, or does, in a designated growth area, you can get up to two dwellings per lot. You can, uh, that can either, they can either be a duplex, for instance, or two separate dwellings. If you're in another area, again, served with water and sewer, I'm gonna forget the designated growth area, it can be up to four dwellings per lot. And then there's requirements and develop one dwelling unit, and you can add a number of different units, two, three, and that as you go on. That, when the law was passed, and I, when I came down and talked to Tim, when Jack was there. I, there was a lot of confusion about this section, I think it was the thought that if you, for instance, had a twenty thousand square foot lot in downtown South Broadway, that was undeveloped. You can just put four units. That's, from what we're understanding from our attorney and from people who were on the conference, uh, or at our annual meeting, which went to Jack. That does not sound as if that's the case, unless the town so chooses to do that. The town can set up, you know, density based on the lot size and lot size per unit of development, so. This is, I'm sorry if this is complicated, but it's gonna be complicated to try to educate people about. But if you have a twenty thousand square foot lot, and the town so chooses, you can say. You need to have an additional twenty thousand per unit for that area. So you can have multifamily dwelling, you can have four units. For multifamily. But it would need, you would have to have, if the town makes that decision, you'd have to have eighty thousand square feet. So that is different than what we understood the law to be when it first came back. Yeah.
I have a question for that. On this slide that I answered by waters, or am I some of the fact like public water, public sewer.
Yes, yeah. So that one, you know, let's think, however we live, you know, we're at the rural zone, it's two to three acre minimum lot size. Basically, what's being said here is that if the town didn't do anything. You had a two acre lot out there, you could put a duplex on it, eight seven, or two acre lot. The town so chooses, you can say, if you wanna put a duplex on this property, you gotta have a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Those are the sorts of things that, you know, the town's gonna need to just sort of start considering. You know, I, I, I will say that. You know, I mean, this was a, this was a legislation, you know, it was creating some chaos, but. You know, there is an affordable housing issue in Maine, and I think this, in a way, this gives the town some options to try to consider out, consider how to deal with it. I don't think it's as. Trontonian as we thought it was initially, that there's a little more flexibility at, as far as the town goes, and make your own decisions on things, which is a good thing, obviously. So, um, a couple of other things here, again, you need to get all the work, so you have sign offs and there's other things. But, uh, the, and then your CEO, if, if everybody decides to start doing these sorts of things, it's gonna be very busy. But, um. These are all subject to subdivision review too, so, I mean, if people are doing this, and it sounds like they can, you know, certify the subdivision.
Paul, subdivision review, that for both. Lots outside one store as well as.
Yes.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, I mean, it does not change your subdivision requirements.
Okay.
And actually, importantly. If you're in a shoreline zone, it doesn't change anything, you know. Maybe what the shoreline zoning says, you're gonna need to follow that. So, um, the last piece of the three. Is accessory dwelling units, and I did take a look at, and I did look at South Borough's density stuff, and someday, maybe I can talk to you more about it, I think. Town already sorta does some of that stuff, I was a little confused, though, I don't know how you're zoning that on that, but. Review, um, the accessory dwelling units, South Broadway currently allows that. We allow, I think we allow one. But again, it's, it's similar to this, what, the difference with this is, is that it can be detached, it doesn't need to be on this, attached to your house or within your house. Somebody can put another full schedule on your property if they have a group meeting or the other set they were with. So it can be added to the existing dwelling attached to existing structure or an entirely new structure. There are no density requirements for eighty units, so. So eighty thousand square foot lot, I'm two acres, you know, I've got a house and make your zone, you can put every other dwelling. I think the town sort of does that already. You can't require any additional parking for that, setbacks are the same, but it does need to, uh, comply with shoreline, so. There are things you can do here, and I can talk about, but one thing is that you can't establish a minimum size for that accessory. Well, there isn't a size. Yes, um, and you can establish a maximum size, one of the things we're, we've been saying to certain people is. You know, it can't be any bigger than the house that's currently on the property. Or else it's not an accessory dwelling. Even with the principal dwelling. I'm not sure legally whether that's the case or not, but anyway, that's sort of what we've inserted, what we've inserted saying. So, you know, again, the accessory dwelling unit, you are, you know, you're unable to, to do up to. I think three or four on your property. However. Can restrict it to one. Which is not, again, it wasn't something that we, when we originally read the law, I'm gonna add a big caveat to all this at the end, if that's okay. But when we originally read the law, we did not think that was the case. And that may need to be vetted further, but I think the town does have that authority to just say, well, we're gonna restrict that to one. Since again, you can't chart, which is really hard to understand, so, and I don't need to spend a lot, it's basically what I just said, but it presents it in graphical form. If you have residential areas on an empty lot, you can put it in duplex, you can put it in triplex or fourplex, if you have water and sewer. It doesn't talk about the density, but you can bring that into account. In residential areas where you already have a developed house, you can add a number of different units with a accessory dwelling piece. And I think, you know, you can add one within the dwelling, one attached to the dwelling, and one. Detached from the dwelling, if you can figure out how to get all those on your property, then we're, you know, you can do that. So that piece, you know, but again, you, you do have the authority to sort of take a look at those and try to figure out. Whether that's what you want or not. The other key piece, which we've been asked a lot, is that in a lot of existing subdivisions in South Broadway. Old Mill, I don't know about Arkanakis Estates, um, that's in Metropole, they all have D restrictions on. These are restricted to single-family only homes. Those apply. You can't override those, these laws, so. What Arkanakis Estates has, but I do know that Mill and Metropole say you can't have a dwelling. Yeah, this is a single-family problem. So. Okay, this is sort of defining the, um, the, the area of growth areas, I mean, the town had, not its plan for the growth area, but since your approval is last from the state, you're really looking at any areas that are served by public water and sewer. Would be eligible for the additional density. That the high-end density, other than. What they can give, for instance, so. That's where a lot of it would go, but. Talking to a lot of people, planning types, they, it's really, you know, one of the concerns is like what's gonna happen in all this rural areas that we've been trying to turf for all these years. And you do have some flexibility, you know, how to deal with that. And as far as what's coming, blah, 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 um, they're doing in their own guidance, and they're gonna have a, that big thing, hotline. D C D is going to have a. Part of two staff people to help, and they will have a check for the grant program, which we're gonna roll out probably in the next couple of months. To help towns try to deal with some of the implications of all this. So, um, and that's something that will certainly alert the towns too, and you can figure out whether you wanna. You know, jump in on that. And then the rulemaking. So what can the cities and towns do, and these are, this is just a short list of things that we have been talking about in the office, and probably more, but. You can enact, you know, enact the lot size per unit requirements, as long as the, uh, required area for the additional units is not larger than the first. If you ask for twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size, somebody wants to put in another. Unit, you can't make it thirty thousand for the next unit, it's gotta be twenty thousand or below. Which, you know, makes sense. Define the maximum square footage of accessory dwelling units, or you don't just get gigantic accessory dwelling units, which turn into, you know, something else. You can define the maximum number of allowed accessory dwelling units. The, the, what a lot of towns in the region, I don't know about South Broadway, but the short-term rental issue is a big one, you know, this was. What, you know, if we wanna create affordable housing, and then people just renting these out for, you know, short-term rentals, and Airbnb's, you know, what have we done, probably not a lot. So, I mean, I think that's something the town they wanna talk about, I can't remember in our accessory dwelling piece of town, whether. Anyone voted a really long time ago, we said it had to be. That had to be public or something, I, I mean. I, I'm not sure if that's the case, but I think that's a big issue for a lot of towns, whether you're gonna regulate short-term rentals, which you can do. And then just be aware of where the, where this fits into your town and where your growth area or. Anyway, um, I think, um, but the one thing I would just say is that I, I would. I mean, this is just our take on this, there are no rules on this, but I think some of that is, you know, we talk to attorneys, we talk to the planners, I think generally, it's sort of the way it's going. But you definitely, and actually, Phil Sossier, who I think is the town attorney. Talking to the borough manager, um, a bit about this, and he had contacted Phil about some things. Including some of these, this density issue that I was talking about, Phil pretty much concurred that. You know, that's, that's, the, the, the borough manager specifically said to Phil, like, if somebody got forty acres in a two acre zoning district. And our ordinance says they need to have. An additional, you know, two acres per unit, if it's a duplex. That's, is that what I'm, is that the way this reads, and he said yes. So, now, I don't know whether South Robert's ordinance heard, says that, I mean, it's gonna be hard to see for a while. So, um, but, you know, in the end, so, because my point is, like, don't take my role for. Take this, because see someone who's gonna defend.
So this is sort of like your. First half.
Yeah.
Right, and then as the rulemaking comes out, I'll need like some more.
Yeah, but I do think you can start looking at some of the, the various aspects of your zoning ordinance to see how they fit. Some of those key points were. You know, what does our accessory dwelling unit piece say? Do we say that we can, if you're gonna have enough, add another dwelling to a unit, not for the accessory dwelling units, because importantly, you cannot add. If somebody wants to add accessory dwelling units, you can't ask them to, for more lot size. You can't increase that, you can only do that if it's a vacant lot, and if they want to. Create additional units, so there's these different, you gotta keep them all sort of separate, but. So.
Now, the chair, I remember before, it's also good for us. So, as you know, our town planner, town planner, borough, so we're already set up. Very annoyed with it. Brought it up, we, yeah, we're gonna jump side on, so, I do think it's important to call during this presentation, the planning department. I think we have a planning board, I get that, it's me, but at least here, here falls pieces of this. As far as more involvement, we've already started, I've already got Tammy looking, pulling the pieces together for us. I'm gonna talk with Jamie and Berwick, and so, the windows is, we've kind of started working. Whatever it is or it's not, we started, so, rather get it much done sooner than later. And I do appreciate Paul coming down and doing this. I can thank, but I have to, or say the presentation, but I think it'll be all.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
I'm a little tired, remember, I said it was hard. If you discuss it, a couple. Here in, of interest, so me and my constituents. Like, certainly, like, we're all up on, we're coming forward. While we need to do a device on this, before the evaluation, Doc will send. We should have Phil for this, and we should. Status of, uh, doesn't sound off the record. And also, the non-conforming structures. There's an incident in White Street. But it's all the accessory structure. It's been a, a long-term. Motor, fire, robbery. Where they got fired. It was an issue of impressive, and left. And now. Those houses. On, on Parent Street are only above. Twenty feet apart, so if that, fortunately, the response was great for the fire department, it was terrific, and they knocked them, there were flames coming out the roof. So, that one up, with all that plastic, all those eighteen doors. Two houses would have been completed. On five home structure fire, so. And with that as an example. Very interested in what the legal minds would say about if someone wanted to convert their garage. To an accessory structure, and that garage was also unperforming with respect to setbacks. So, before people start getting into that, perhaps Tammy can get into that as well, say, okay. So, before people start getting into that, perhaps Tammy could get into that as well, say, okay, if someone wanted, what accessory unit aren't existing, aren't on the record, do, does the accessory structure need to adhere to the prevailing setbacks?
Yeah.
You know, so like on White Street, it's fifteen feet in R1, so I'd want that back, so it's twenty. So it's, it's important to understand that, because in the downtown area, all of our, we don't have to make dollars for lots, it's just rare to have that, and there, you know, this was our all densely developed, when it was a built town in the late seventies, and so we have dense development already. And so, we have to make sure that we're going ahead with, uh, our eyes wide open as to how this may apply. I also brought up, you know, Paul, I believe that, that the S M P is,
I know you said.
P C, right, main road. Uh, the annual meeting, I think, is, is out to compute, and it was very helpful, I thought, because there was an attorney speaking, and it was also some of this from E C D.
Yeah, yeah.
Last one, the developer.
Yeah.
Agriculture, that's what it was, of course. Jeff Levine, who was the staff, I offered some of these questions to him, and the behavior of, I didn't really know what to say, but, uh, that, that's something that I would encourage folks to, yeah, as the rulemaker, so. Take our, I don't think we're special. Respect, the, the borough probably has the same issues, and a lot of towns, these little towns, where the downtowns in those zones are, uh, but, the other thing, so this is something we had many years ago called Friends of South Berwick Village, and we're concerned because our people in the zone has no performance standards. And people go property like property, like, with, with building structures. Building restrictions, I don't know. So now there's also potential dramatic change. If someone was, that, that was the reaction, getting like the ready people like that. But, if this goes to residential, so there's the possibility of having a net limited bridges, three joint lots in that zone, and then, you know, really, please density. Well, that's a good, a bad thing, but there's a potential, so we have to have our eyes wide open, because I think, I wasn't here in seventy-eight, but, I think, so, we don't need, there's only two special standards, nobody's known. No one's looking at that, someone coming in and raising structures, and it's, it's, it's need more, or something. Those are, those are the things that I would just say, though, it's a real issue.
I would, you know, again, I, I, you know, I would encourage the town to have a discussion, rather than doing the absolute minimums of all this stuff, but to have a discussion on what, you know, how much do we have for affordable housing, I think we need more of that. What do you want it to look like, how do you want it to be done? You know, um, yeah. You know, you do, I, I, the good thing with the law now, which is great, is that you have the ability to sort of pick and choose how you want things to look. Where. So, um, there's still lower some requirements there, but, you know, I think if, if, if the town wants to take a lead in developments or affordable housing, we can listen, need it, then you, you do have some options.
Good, and the house, and this Jeff Levine, during the annual meeting, was, I heard the fact that we've had many of your developments, since the nineteen eighties, was a shot for that, and second, that's six, a lot of people didn't realize that was the three hundred and four, three hundred and six homes up there, we densified. And Agmonic Estates was a little too, and, and Old Mill has homeowners association, they have requirements, but I don't believe that's in place for deep restrictions. Someplace like Agmonic Estates, where we already densified, instead of having one acre lots, we brought it out as smaller lots. And, uh, that was a great benefit to the town, because it was, that was six two acres for well, that effectively, a lot of different coastal policies. And so, it seemed like it's being penal that we densify the development, build the neighborhood, and then densify that which is already densified. Correct. I've thought about this a little bit more, I just want to is that, it almost makes sense to me, not your software, but uh, but the fact saying that we already have non-performing structures, and non-performing lots of record, that we acknowledge that in our office, and say, this is already densified. It's, it's penal for us to densify that further. It doesn't really help solve the problems, as far as trying to solve, and that we go to other areas that are water and sewer, which doesn't include areas as we go on to R2 and R2A and that sort of. That might be the step that we can take, because rather than ignore the law, acknowledge the law, give, contribute to the law, and say, we're ignoring this on purpose, for a good reason. And I believe we have a good face with that.
So, interject with that, going down the road. That goal, that I recommend, and the council. Then, then get this information to the planning board first. And I envision sometime this fall, Tammy can get working on this, Scott, it's our condition, and my, my thought is, once Paul has more information, we talk to Phil Saucier, Tammy, we get all the players to the table, at some point, tables of the council and planning board, and the folks that all cross together in the workshop, sometime in fall, sit down, see what, if it looks like that, only because, hopefully by then, yeah, talking to the council, there might be some clearer rulemaking, it gives us a better guidance, and that's one of the things that was, that we're waiting on, better rule guidance. So I think, that's my plan for, that's what I recommend to council.
Speaker asked Mr. Levine, any attorney, about if the small towns, they've had it worked together quite a bit. So those, they have their annual town meeting, they have this stuff, we got it, but they said, wow, they put terrific, horrific on us. That's, you know, warrant, that's a right, because they were, and all the rest. And there was a response, well, they didn't, they gave like, it was a crack in the door. They said, it's by the rulemaking, and I think this just makes sense that we're drawing it out. That it's, it put a community maybe progress towards adopting revised ordinance to try and comply, that they'll give a kind of a lift and a nod to say, well, we'll do an extension. But, but you have to make problems, and that was, what, like, the character of the president.
Yeah, and that was just an amendment to bill, I mean, you know, or like, something that, I, I think you're gonna see town wanting an extension.
Yeah. I don't know, they passed the law where they don't even have a rating yet, and expect us to comply here. Come on, it's just like the real law, it puts it on hold, they asked the law, that they didn't have figured out, and now we're in a hole because of that.
All right.
Here. The way I was understanding, it's expensive, only impacts, where the town, that's the main concern. That's two point five, right, right, well, I mean, it could be in a rural area, well, you have the option in a rural area of increased density. You have that option. I mean, again, it sort of depends on what the town's, your ordinance currently says. Like, I think, you know, you can build a duplex out, or, you know, for Mallory High, but you gotta have one hundred and sixty thousand square, eighty thou, uh, one hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Um, I, I think, you know, you could, but I don't know if, you need to look at that to see whether that is what's currently, the way that's written or not. If it's not, then you could build a duplex, it says you can build a duplex on a vacant lot. Anyway. Question for the town is that we wanna require additional, and, you know, additional lot size in order to do that. So, so, I mean, that's out of the rural part, and then downtown, the same sort of idea.
Right, I was gonna, right now, we say, we don't have a growth development zone.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So if you get that growth development zone, you think for that, doesn't that just put the two point five density, it's just there.
For that affordable housing project.
Okay.
So remember, that affordable housing project is, uh, it's governed by state rules, you gotta have, it's gotta be affordable, it's equal eighty percent of the, the income. I mean, it's, it's the line, and then you're the town, which is sort of great, I mean, the town would need to find somebody to monitor over a thirty-year period that those units stay affordable. I don't think the town wants to do that. So you'd have to find a housing authority or somebody else, maybe the state, so. So you have to do that, that's on that piece, Jeff, you know, that, that.
Okay.
I start the question, so in order for us to get that designated growth area, we compromise a plan, we have to get part of the updated plan less than two. But it seems like this law's not nearly, especially for those we originally thought it was more flexible, but that also makes it harder for us because it's not as structured, right?
That's great, that, that's it, and that's, I mean, in our office, and I was thought, I mean, we were like, okay, well, it's just like, okay, you gotta do this, this, that.
Yeah.
We'll just go out to the town, say, here's what you gotta do. However, now you have a bunch of decisions to make. And your ordinance, and then Scott was saying on the non-performing piece, I mean, once you start pulling a string on an ordinance, I mean, the whole thing can unravel in a bunch of different ways. You know? You know, or, can you put an accessory dwelling in another non-performing structure, or non-performing lot? Because your ordinance says you can't expand a non-performing structure or a lot, or, you know, use. You know, I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I mean, that's a question for Phil Saucier. Yeah. And those sorts of things are like, all those little weird pieces that you're gonna now need to sort of think about, as opposed to just like, they are implement, implement this.
Yes, and no, and yes.
Yes, yeah.
There needs to be a lot more work behind the scene in a lot of places. At this point, I want to get Paul here, the briefing, so that he at least know about it. I think the one call, the work behind the scene, Tammy, uh, Phil Saucier. I think it's important to get all the planning boards, they, you know, where, and then we start moving the tablet.
I think that's a good plan, thanks Paul for having me.
Thanks.
You guys will work well together, it's nice to have you.
Yeah, sure, all, all, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Yeah.
So, before you head out, speaking, would you please, and conference.
Yeah.
We're, we're not there yet, as far as issuing the survey.
Right.
So whenever we drop for advertising for that.
Yeah.
We wanted to, or, I'm not sure, we set the fifteen this date for that, and we're not gonna make.
Well, they may, we send it to the Sentinel, uh, I guess we could ask them, they have a deadline, which we are hoping to get it to this Friday, Sentinel.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll say, you know, I'll.
Well, if it goes, it goes, but, I mean.
It'll spill, but if it does, then we should at least have it available online.
Right.
If we're gonna say it's gonna be available.
It's gonna be coming quickly, but.
Yeah, okay.
Why not just be exact as on the ground?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Great, um, public comment, is there anyone who wants to speak about anything that's not on the agenda? All right, I see your hands.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to request that when we move into the side of the aisle, and have a little thing.
Oh, yes.
We moved up, I'd just like to say over that, like, a little more, as well, to help the council, they and chair, would we, would we hile that, or a little thing up, by the end of the town, and sir?
If you have a second, I'll look in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? None of those votes, thanks, you're glad you took that.
Thank you, um, so, Morgan, they left last, they left last, Morgan. Yeah. Got a family that's been planning to build, they bought a lot here in forty-eight, in Hualhale, Mallory. They gone to store district, came to see how the stuff's put in. They did not move the water vector yet. After they came, all that rose that paper in twenty, twenty-five season, the stuff's not been installed. Now, they, goes over, I think, getting back mobile, they went up, filling up the lots for a quarter, five years, well, two days, so. But, you know, with your moratorium, you have to, on the so, our recommendation is, identity with store and water, and they were open up one trench. Try to put together, separate them, and also the piece requirements. But that would be the recommendation.
Can I just restate my understanding of the situation? So it sounds like the, uh, for sewer and water, you all have kind of arranged, so the sewer district to have, sort of, stuffs.
Yeah, so they, they just cross the road.
Yeah.
Put the pipes in, so that on the edge of the lots, when it comes time, and they have to pay to cross the lot.
Yeah.
And they're all done.
Yeah.
But we had, you know, the.
Basically, they didn't get, those things were arranged, that didn't get done before the road got rechanged, now we're to do everything, that needs to unmake first.
Right, so in, in your back, you see that the water district, uh, store district willing, for cooperation, closing one approximately thirty-four wide pavement, uh, Hualhale, Mallory, by water sources. There's new any laws created by seco expression mechanics, they want a lot, it's a solidated water service, go on, explain what it was. So. I got statements from both of them, say they could do it. Got a statement included in that from Jamie, Gloria, Morgan, so, what they get, so.
Madam Chair, I moved the river over the moratorium, the one water, two line, for you. I'll send her that to the discussion.
So, we have a question for the next session.
We can put another speaker on there. But what I would suggest to do, um, is that, uh, I understand hardship of, of all this, but one condition I'd like to place on this is that when we make the trenches back, come back, and do all that standards that require to make the bases of the road. That when we come to base the road, that we, the process called infrared treatment, we're basically patch, we put infrared machine on the pavement, it heats up adjacent pavement, so you blend it together, it takes away that that, that, and it's probably done, done, done that areas where water can get to catch bases, or something like that, and, uh, it's, it's not, uh, oh my god, expensive. So I think that that would be a reasonable consideration, so that the road stays good for the trial and public, and also we will have the business of it.
If we publish this, will this be completed prior to next week, like, that session? When, when could be, for this, when would it, uh, work be done, would it be done prior to school being reopened, or academy setting?
Right, right, oh.
I think we're looking to start maybe later, so that I'm happy with my person.
Yeah, so, probably in the fall, it's all.
Who will be watching how the roads look back together?
Yeah, well, I think, one of the things I would recommend, I would recommend, uh, after Doc and us coming down there, is The, the thing, we made a motion to say that the condition of the road at the end of this has to be, certain to the same position where it goes. So that we can't be dented the road, and if the road does dip, so, they have to keep coming back, and they're responsible to fix that each year. But, you know, that happens. That's not our responsibility, that's, whether it's water, soil, weather, but. Then I'll tear off the road, and we have this for other towns, they go back and you go, uh. Happy job looking back together, and then the next bridge, they did it, and we're back up there.
Right, you sound on the homework, though, it's on water and soil.
Water and soil.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with that, it's one way to show it's not falling that way.
Right. It just, if, if the road needs to be, along with infrared, maintained in the current condition of this. And I think, and that, then all that does, that allows us, we have to go back and fix it, right?
All right, so we need to amend that motion then. I was correct, we need to, that's another motion for that.
I'll just read that. Max, three seconds, please. Second.
Give a motion in a second. Are you clear, Carter? All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome to town.
Yes.
They're, they're asking you to use, like, yeah, we were very watching that picture, but, uh. Yeah, there's, there's, they're starting.
Very excited. Thank you so much. Thanks for suggesting that. Uh, all right, your turn.
So, I'm just being able to put a straight plate, um, neighborhood is very happy, received several emails, phone calls, people are excited. They decided to walk in, on the road again. Good thing. Be finishing up a good pitch work of Rattle Street and doing roadside bowling. Police have been back in the last two weeks, has had one arrest, eight accidents, on their quicker than practice. The police shooting, Lieutenant, working, they're looking at it, so. We're pleased to have an accredited, there's been a lot posted in accreditation program. Next Monday, they'll have our president, police department accreditation program, get all day, will be at the policies, procedures, and so forth, the ladies do. Officer Scott Stevens, who's been with us now officially four years. Who's retired from law for twenty eight, twenty one years, has officially been promoted to detective side. And the bond is supposed to fall with the second position approved. So they're looking at one more officer, and now have. He's now assumed the position of detective side, so we're Tuesday, Wednesdays, detective leadership. Thursday, Friday, night, he was a villain, and then nine super. Interested to help. To help, yes. White Department, the last two weeks, has had eight calls, fairly disowned, treat themselves as a nice group. Um, from the emergency emergency agency, we've been working on N V A A check sheet for disaster planning. They have some trainings for disaster planning, planned in September, October. Been attending, attended the virtual, uh. Emergency counting act, and we've dropped out. I know from police department that. Kind of often in the working, school, under emergency evacuation school. Well, unfortunately, we've been transitioning from Bill to Jenny. Um, she's been the predisposition of the team, she jumped right in. She's already digging into what is pending, um, just officially made time for the swap. Yeah, just kind of taking over the office, like, kind of had so, made off in the background, staple files, they come up here to a week. I didn't share anything, been working on all the final caveats of the last, all the pieces of paper, that they're gonna need to transfer that over, transition. Jenny will be in South Borough on Mondays and Wednesdays. From the planning side, Jenny, planning areas are busy. Land third process, Steven Street, multi-family dwelling. Sanville Estates, AKA also known as Meadow Pond Estates, phase three, Regidale Road. In Regidale, where it is. Jenny is now those engineers, did the stuff, design and processes for them. Planning group, planning water group, they had six lots up there in our home town road. And the attractive industry use, among one of the supply for five year. Uses the processing, rather than lots and portion of attractive industry, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If the lot is sold prior to the five year timeframe, and the owners will return to the planning board, they continue to use or remove. Jenny scheduled to be working in South Borough, but she's leaving. And you've already worked, been working with, um, both. Jenny and Jen, have been working, getting some forms updated, so, we've got a pipeline, make service, see beautiful stuff. While there are two, two hundred people signed up with summer rate program. But we have a green handle, we've made a main event related to the sun. Recreation, some camp is on, we're going very well, while we're having. Say, play the obstacle, plus, you please off, practice training, videos will be later posted. Oh, tomorrow, videos will be forthcoming, folks. Uh, for the senior program, full body lunch, with all attendants, next Wednesday, they're having a full manual body lunch, again, to be able to report. Uh, assessing, our head office is continuing on finalizing work with sales analysis. I am just started working assessing two days a week, making error, um, position, so it's gonna give them all time hours. Bruno said it's been a great asset to hurricane, stop wilding, figure out the tape. Bruno will have the final evaluation, uh, myself and Jen, hopefully next week. Under the town court's office. Visiting town administration still, and I am going to Gossam, where I make trends tomorrow, what time is that, make trend? You authorize it, you live a path, and then.
Share municipal law, or, well, share it with the license, I think it's municipal law.
Okay. Uh, transfer station, they're gonna be paying events to make it look more presentable, and serve them a little bit. Jay had a citizen call, complimenting how well the transfer station are looking, how well it's nice, how well it's been run. All D S. Yes, model, which is because of grant, but, so. So. Come to finance.
Sure, uh, we're watching, we're very closely to make sure they're getting put to the right ears. We are working on your end entries. I will be doing some training, we're gonna tomorrow, get her a little bit up to speed, so that I'm not the only one that knows how to do all this stuff. Uh, verifying the new budgets that were put in the system, and all payroll changes that we just did, the first payroll July, it's high by the highest one of the whole year, because of all the changes. Personal property tax letters will be going out to those who still have balances that are at stake. And they are looking into doing our open enrollment online for our health insurance, for the new upcoming year, which we in November, start in December.
Question.
I'll check if we already sent that. As of, during the, June, I'd be in the, approximately.
I didn't do that number this week, but I'll definitely do it for the next council meeting. I've been, we did it last week, it hasn't changed all that much, that included the check run that we saw. So. We are in very good shape. I consider.
It's funny, especially you'll understand, that's what the first made, told the captain, Tom Smith, by Kenny. Now, before the expert, just saying, we're on the chase, full speed ahead. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Come on, John.
Can we run a check?
Yes.
We better check.
Then we're in good shape. Long as we run a check.
I can always, I'll always make sure we run a check.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in good shape. Uh, company Fed next Thursday, we're willing a new time, we have the spring bill.
I mean, certainly folks, I hope you guys come. I have a whole thing we can have an afternoon for a couple of hours of having you folks interact with the employees and staff. That was one of the things this morning when we were talking about. That, you know, with police department, how they're getting to know new folks and how that's exciting to them because in the past it wasn't really. One of the things that I said, we want, we want certainly, now, now, folks will know the police department. Good and bad, I want you to know, if it was too good or not. Um, have we posted? We posted what we.
No.
No, there's no official business being conducted. But I, I will hold on to that.
Well, given the little pride to the guys that do it yet, posting the thing, we're managing, we'll post it.
That they, I went to that, I got, I got, I got that, it's not an official. Not anything, you know, you know.
We, we used to get together, trustees of the Sioux District, the Bar District, the Park Council, and the Indian District. And we'd have a Christmas party, someone's house, then thousands of. Not, not the municipal, it would be present.
Is it the present party?
Well, that could be, but it just, you couldn't eat like that, that would invite.
Right, but, but we're not, we're not doing any.
That's years ago.
Yeah.
I'm sure you've got an email about how it is in the charter.
Yeah.
There's a role, someone's out there watching.
Oh, I make mistakes every day. Okay. If anybody's talking business, I'll smack them in the back like that.
I was just trying to buy and I saw three groups on the.
We'll, we'll post it. Um, we have an offer on the table, virtually two pieces of land up. There's a lot of time, um, around the time. And that they're both pieces of land, um, look at it, see. Back taxes. Heels, the person wants to buy it, which came through a land assurancing. I'll get, I'll have more information, I'll hold it all, I suspect, right here, there's a gap, hold it, I'll have something for you next week.
Can I, are these part of both the town property, town, yeah.
The town will put pieces of land, but they individually, a piece and a bill go by the same person, people of Biden. What I need to find out, I need to find out how, probably had so many taxes, I don't know, I'm trying to find that out. We just had this meeting this morning, so.
So, so you gotta be careful too, if we have a bunch of stuff that shows on the tax map, it doesn't exist.
Very, yeah.
We went through this two years ago. We, we've been doing it each place since I've been, since I've been on the council today. There's land that shows on the tax map that doesn't really exist, so just be, be careful with the, I, make sure it does exist. Then road. When, which truck road was on, which is off coast on ninety-one, and it was just a side road. And there's some land out there behind the old York landfill, it's called out on the south road again. That's the discussion with the voters out there, but no one could identify a record site. Where it was, and it was like, I guess the boss was trying to, we got a survey of it. There's some.
Yeah.
Some, some folks on.
So, we're, we're waiting to see, we're, we're gonna do research, we'll mortgage your car, and then we'll, we'll have something to do later on. Uh, we had a little time to party with Joe yesterday, thanks for, uh, over, thanks for coming. Joe was sad to leave. Twenty-seven, twenty-nine years, but it happened, so. He's sad to leave, but he's had to breathe out. Burner tied into space and settling in. We've done three resumes for the economic development position, we're moved down. So, when we did the evaluation for this building, one of the, yeah, four or five of them, they'll buy up the gas, walk through, it's gonna send again. One of them was finished in, in old time films. They came through, they looked at it, apparently they decided they did a couple steps further, they submitted a proposal. We didn't, we did not solicit it, we did not ask for it, we did not advertise it, we did not, wait, but they are all hearing. This proposal is, it's a, it's a lease proposal, it's not a same. Lease, all we can tell you off, read through and say, basically what they were doing was moving into the lease period to reset the building, they're gonna make the building, the land. They would pay us over thirty years, they pay us not quite, Jesus, then, then pay us. Months on, on that lease of thirty years. I guess for seventy-five years. They would then make this a formal house. We didn't, again, we did not solicit this, we did not advertise this, we did not put this all over, did, I didn't do any of those, they just gave us a proposal. There is some federal economic dollars in this store buildings, and it is available, which is not prompted down, kind of jump into this. So, that being said, my option is to present it to you, however, don't go in any with this, this information will be straight down. I've given it, picked it up until, to get legal answer. Once I have that, the next meeting, I'll move to more definitive direction. Whether we consider this, whether we want to, a couple of caveats, for that is a problem. If, if you did something like that, did for the building, I did, so, I don't know, that's an issue and all, that's something filled out, though, it's gonna have to third. The second part of it is, they were going on a cycle of trucking, involved on their federal loans. We, we have to have some ways to go. That would be a problem, we would, we would, and we didn't get out, and we don't get across it. So, the positive side is, is, I don't know, thirty thousand, eight years to the payment of the town office. That's, yeah, so, I wanted to just submit it to you that they, we did not solicit this, we did not ask for it. If I had any, if I was asked us if I would present it to you, if anyone wanted.
He tried to come as close as he could in this term of right, so that it would be minimal impact on tax dollars made. So, he's trying to help. Have a way to try to figure out how to make that. But, the reason why he was questioning it to a student was those federal dollars are one way, and there's only a pot of money. He doesn't know if it's gonna be a punishment or not, he never knows. So, to make it work, he needs a big portion of that money. Remember for on his side, who's good on our side. I think that's what drove the timeline.
Doesn't mean, you're just, all this for the office.
Yes, he's thinking between sixteen or eighteen, depending if they are, if they're anything for the state, obviously, or maybe they can leave that as open space, or at least three quarters of it. Because that store has a building, he wants to preserve as much of it as he can. Which a lot of the contractors we've talked to do.
I, I set up for the price, so, read it, and we'll all have more information for Phil, hopefully next.
All right. Let's just ignore this, and we'll get more information.
There is, there's no deal with purchases, no deal with sellers, no deal, it's just a proposal that he submitted, may I pass it on, you know, get some more background. Want to make that, but we didn't, not, we didn't advertise and sell the building, but it also did, we're not, in the name of it, that it sells for dollar, it sells for dollars, dollars, that he said. Four, four, one month, four, four fifty, so, there's something. Uh, and then we have to do the side of the building. So, we got that school set. And. Well, I can only tell you disappointment, because we're held up. When we went through the budget process, the school said they tried to eat their budget cost with fifty percent. When they gave us the price that I built the budget on, was about one point nine, one point ninety percent. Their assessment, and there's a couple pieces, I'll let Jack talk over this in a second. They called us up last week, their assessment is at three point seven percent, plus the next year, I doubt it. So, we were like, oh, okay, hang on, hi, what's going on? Couple things happened. So, one of the things they couldn't deal, didn't know, with the school funding formula. Was when the school does the mil rate for their. For their funding formula for schools. They use the number of enrolled students. They do not consider enrolled students, students who are private or for learning. So, last year, they lost a bunch of work, they had a bunch of students that were before they were learning. So, their assessment of the state was dead. Because of that, as well as the second agreement with Elliot, based fifty percent on property value, fifty percent on students. It's too long to go down the property value, so higher valuing. So, you want to put in, write that all.
Sure, she was looking at the top section, which is the valuation of each town for Elliot and South Park, and you can see that Elliot is higher than South Park. But the section right below talks about how many children are in each town attending the school, so it's the opposite, but we have more children at the actual school than Elliot does. So, then you take the next section where it talks about valuation, they're higher than us, and then also the other piece that comes into this complicated formula. Is the mil rating from the state where it's produced. So, therefore, they have. So, we can see the first, there's two pieces to it, the first section that's done with the mil rate, um, Elliot is paying more than us. Then you have the section of fifty fifty, and that is the global assessment. I'm not sure what constitutes what in the school system, but they have two sections of their budget. So, therefore, the very bottom section shows the increase for the town of Elliot, being one point three four, and increase for South Park are three point seven two. Into a tally. So, I had, at the one point eight nine, we had calculated about a hundred sixty thousand dollar increase for here, where in actuality it's three hundred twelve thousand. So, there's a bunch of different factors in that, they also changed things, late, I have a, we go here from Brian Porter, he's the finance director of the school. They also last minute of their budget decided to add second grade teacher. And increased science teacher as well, so that ain't a portion of it, so there's all kinds of moving pieces to this. The unfortunate part is, is it's almost double what we expected it to be once we go.
So, we need to tell.
We're much improved. Has been voted.
Of course.
We don't have any, say, unfortunately, or.
So, remember the dip rate, right, remember the sixty-nine percent? Um, that's all we have, which is why we need more dip. That sixty-nine percent, now, just jumped out of both sides of the ones. And five of us have. So, you know, take this world in, so, the main economic result, and, you know, a huge plus factor with Burner, sweet. Was that gas pipeline, upstate was going in, there's a massive value. Going up this issue, I'll say, that's going online, that's gonna be a monster, of course, exactly. Federal law, they, they get lots of. Private companies, with big commercials, they help it. But, hoping that we have enough evaluation here to throw a little, all cover this, so that. But, but understand one thing, I'm not criticizing this, I mean, yeah, every time somebody moves a town, though, with all its kids. That's what happens, in the tax program. I think we.
There is something we put a lot, we can make a budget, like we cut our budget.
You have to go to the full budget.
Yeah, it's a waste, it's a waste time, because they don't answer to the people, they don't have to answer to us. You don't know that all anymore, right, right, they, they do not answer to the residents, right, they answer to the me. See, they don't answer to us.
Nice question, so, so for the enrollment decrease, like, this past year, there were not, was not, like, this past year, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. This is, this was not your old versus previous.
Right.
Okay. And so, if they ended that year with lower enrollment, physical in person. I believe that comes into the mil rate, where they were paying seven dollars and forty-six cents per, we said, three, ten. Believe that for that, using that consolation goes in there.
Right, but you're right, it's, it's, it's the same thing, it's, right, that's the state mil rate, I definitely get the funding formula, we're paying school, so, with school funding. So, they use the last, they're all a year long. So then, so then next year, they'll have this year's student enrollment.
To make it up, so, because they're getting less money from the state, they have to just depend on the town to make up that debt.
Well, so, like, I have one more question, and I don't think it's deeper, but where on any of this is the goal? Most different. Where on this is the money that the lawns for is paying our school to send their kids here?
I don't see that out there, comfortably.
Neither do I, so where's the money for the kids that are coming from lawns? They're paying thirty-two, thirty-three hundred dollars a kid.
So, are there back things to vote?
But it should be broken out.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing from you guys is the school budget is increased, unfortunately, due to, um, pretty specific reasons around students, segregation, whatever. We have control over the new school budget, and that's all that we have control over, unfortunately, which we step we're in, is we have to work with what the school give us. We control the school working, it's our residents of the town to push for that, but today, right now, we're councillors, and we're responsible for the school budget. And, of course, we have to factor the school budget, so that factor it, that's what, so it will affect our mil rate, maybe sort of aside that. We just, well, you'd be surprised that that number is kind of like the original. And also, just to be clear, at the annual time meeting, you know, I think, to bold if you guys got up and spoke about, uh, you know, based on COVID funds, and kind of where we were standing. We felt pretty good about what, where we might be able to vote, mil rate this year, without base on the information that we had at the time, which now we have new, different information, and we're just dealing with that. The big piece we don't have some part of it is what our board is, and that could cover this, it might not, that's the thing we don't know. When do we get that? We should have some numbers in our next week, so that we can start playing with those numbers, and start getting some, you know, there's money.
Five, five, if I may, what is the school, random, what is, what is the school like to have? Problem is.
I'm just trying to throw it one.
So, you know, I, I don't understand a couple things, it's all my place to point, we'll go on. Maybe we just go outside the classroom, I don't know. But, what I need the council to understand is, say, if I made a tally based on the information I had found, or a month later, first of all, paying for the power again. Yeah, we're still hoping for the positive, so, not, we're not considering what we do here. There's not a lot of evaluation. That is possible.
No, so, I guess, it is, in a certain sense, but my limited understanding of the school funding formula, as our valuation goes up, by school subjects, we're impacted. We can do economic development, but in fact, from this balance perspective, it's a net sum. Those people are resident, they're real shop, and they know exactly where it is, so. Stop, maybe if we're going off, which is great, returning our, taking into the, maybe, coming back to the school budget, we're not, town's not getting any better, but. A long for a great education, I went through this. That's, they missed the wall, they thought.
And this is why, those companies now, we were at sixty-nine, so now we're at seventy-one, seventy-two, and why the district is really something, I mean, so that. We're in this situation.
That's gonna help the tip, it's not gonna help people with this, can't really do this. And, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it while we're here.
So, we're not gonna sit here and debate the school budget?
I'm not debating the school budget, I'm just telling you, I would say.
Uh, that, oh, that's, is, is, this is a political statement. In fact. School board directors. What we're sitting on that, that thousand. It needs to be something that's, that's our, like, representatives there, and that's, that's where it comes from, towards my, co-representation, starting the school. Historically, board directors are less than.
I just want to do one thing, so we went through the exercise this year, acknowledging the increase in just the cost of living, and I forget what the, the measures of. Your, no.
So, I'm right there.
Yes. We went through a whole round addressing that, and had increases to our municipal budget due to that, but we have other factors going on, always revenue or whatever, to offset that to a certain amount. We say that's not against the, yeah, right, across the board, the cost of living is going up, period, and story, no matter what you do.
There's one to make news on, that's by Town End, Mr. Clark. See, all, Thursday, we have some awards that we want to do, to hand out to employees, I don't know, come, for that, and, uh. That's five of us, maybe all five of them. Down. Go ahead.
All right, um, I'm finished with this, that's number one, and number two. I think these will come off, I think Tim, I think they'll update here, as I know, you and I spoke last week, uh. And Tammy has kind of been stepping in a little bit, helping out with the medical marijuana, uh, careovers, something like, we're ready to, you know, we have drafted, she's, uh. I know she has something to do from her way.
Yeah, so we met with, we met with Tammy, and Joe, maybe to kind of get caught up on what is the thing these have given us for the workshop, to get prepared, that we all just started the workshop that we're gonna do. Um, don't forget that. So, I gave that to them to get them up to speed, and all of them were looking at it, going out there, going, if you guys have training from such and such state, and you have this, you have this, you know, this, this needs to say this. And I immediately get to look at it, go, you know a whole lot more about this than I know this, for some reason. They said, yeah, we're very dull, we're very dull, screwed, we don't feel sauce here, we're down in Burwick, we're all done, we've got all the levels, we've got all the wording, we know all the stuff from the state requirements. A lot of stuff, I said, yeah, please bring any information you can, or share with the council, as we're playing, or if you can help, if you think you can. So, I asked them to do that, you can district that whenever you want, whenever you don't want, but at least they have got something that they had gone through, to like, they can, Burwick, they adopted, they offered in on marijuana. But they have to afford to come and do the whole thing, through the licensing piece, so. They had questions made along the way, I believe, right, and they were asking us, talk for the, what's this about, well, this needs to say this, we, you know, they asked us, Office of Canada's. Office of Canada's planning, they had something, especially, I think she said they just updated, we're making change, they call it Office of Canada's policy. Yeah, but, but that's.
Continue, good.
Well, I guess, the good news is, maybe we got, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll give us more information for the council, that's.
Go ahead, he. I was gonna say, I think you update for this, we have a workshop, I have a second, we'll have more information, why is that?
Background, for your purposes, we have to screen a little bit, is that Burwick has a completely different point of view. In fact, if you're not the one that helps us in, uh, stores, uh, yeah, they're much more efficient, like I said, than we, yeah, so. It's not gonna be cool if they commit to the Burwick guidance.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that was, the task that I gave that wasn't, and giving the word, wouldn't stick down your throat, that wasn't what I asked them to do. What I asked them to do was bring that knowledge, that what they've had developing those words is, to help me do any guidance that could help get us to where we need to get done with this.
Give them what works.
Right. And I mean, just give you guidance, that's all I asked them to do, I didn't ask them to create curves, wouldn't see their, I didn't tell them, you know, we're not gonna do love it, or. I said, here's what we're doing, this is what we're gonna, yeah, we start on with, they have information, I hope you can dig their brains. The other council, they're the employees, can say, you know about this, can you give us some information? They seem to have more updated information from the last two weeks, so having a conference with the Office of Canada's, planning or something, they call it. That's all, just, just give you that, they've got more information than I, they're gonna be more helpful with me.
Specifically, what we really need, the presidential role, advice, is where they are on medical marijuana, prevention, care. That's, that's what's in our process right now. The other stuff, with all the other pieces of price testing, health, the shit factor, yeah, we're already gone over those, but that's the specific piece.
I think we're trying to work all where, that's what we're trying to do with it.
And we're civic staff.
Yeah.
So, 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 yeah, so, and I'm trying to go with, I said, I'm gonna need, I need you to come up and speak, and that will be, to be a resource for the council, to help guide us, whatever it is that private call. About food, I understand, it is, like, uh, for them. Anything you want to add?
Uh, so we have August second, we're set at six thirty, um, I might be a little bit late to that, so I can start up. All right, we'll move on to, uh, I'm gonna finish this, I'm gonna be completing my update survey.
Uh, we have to do one more, hold on, shoot.
My update survey.
Yeah, we're going around about, uh. Stop in Eastport in general, today, and friends, yeah, here, where the list is, a web list, pretty huge, because once we have the list defined, that'll give us the price of them.
The list of, the list of locations.
And I think where we are right now is trying to get a list of current residents in towns, level, it tells not only property, but also people. Probably that list in some fashion, we can go over it, migrate, get, remember unit price. Quarter right now, maybe just for, that's good, but it was, you know, once we get that list, get the numbers, it's, we'll fight up. We're not there yet, and we're gonna, we set a, we set a deadline, or this is drop on July fourteen, or, or, we're not there. So, Tuesday, Friday, so, but, what's our next meeting, Jeff? Twenty-fifth? Yeah, I'm not gonna be able for. Hopefully, we kind of limited because, you know, of the meat schedule, and, uh, square way, it was kind of, you know, back and forth. That's, that's, that's the main, stick it in our way, that's, get the list, and, uh, once we have that, then. We'll, we'll advise manager, and then figure out.
That can be processed.
Just wanted to, so it's hopefully we have that all by today, so that the council will be aware, but. All of this, that's just, money, you should, uh, it's a possible, to benefit the public. funny, you should, it's also possible to conduct a Republican. That's, that's probably oh, we perhaps, once we have, you know, work for the job. And then turn it up to that piece of, what was I saying, maybe?
Right, you guys is number one, first, we have official officials for a question, we put three, so I had a brief thought, make a motion. Motion to affirm the following individuals' permissions for this school year twenty two, twenty three. Tim Miller, Tom Manager, Tax Department, Commissioner, Jennifer Tannell, Assistant Tom Manager, Brent Street, Sheriff Attorney, Barbara Brennan, Cecilia, Tom Clerk, Register, Registrar of Voters, Ivy, W B Agent, Motor vehicle, Intermodal, Tax collector. Brent Sharp, Assistant Agent, Jennifer McCabe, Call Person Officer, Tamara Bellman, Planner, David Barker, Football Super, David Rivera, Police Chief, Constable, Nicholas Hamel, Fire Chief, Fire Warden, Lane Cody, and Vice Senior Management Director, Harvey Barbe, and a Little Patrol Officer, DeShawn, Library Department Director, Full Trade Preparation Director, and John Brown, General Assistant Minister.
And Sheriff, move to, uh.
Are your names? You guys, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have your names, I'm just sorry.
What did it say?
Um, any discussion? All those in favor of, for me, translated, we have scholarships for, I. All right, I. Any votes? We have to make this is number three, we will offer her license for it, right?
And Sheriff, who, who license for it, right? Their business is good standing, and they have the way to report to us from the, what will be.
Got a question in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? You guys is number four, transfer station.
So what it was, we're going to propose, we're going to begin, propose to do some updated fees for the transfer station, we're behind on a couple things. Um, but at the same exact time, Kenny Kate came and said that we're behind us, so they're behind us. Her making fees for, for, so what I decided to do was hold off, and when they get any recommendation, they have recommendation. I'll put them in front of you next week, consideration and adjusting and so, it's really I have all done it, it fell down that way, but that's, continue if you just do it all once again.
All right, so no exceptions.
So the thing we got here, just, is that, I said, I want to talk about boomboxes.
You turn tables and combo units, just half a city society, you go up, that, yes.
And I know all here.
I have in my garage and it's.
All right, so that is a small number, that is.
Well, I, I'm probably filled up with category. Supposedly, I have one each problem. Anyways, yeah, it was, it was, it was great to attend the parent ceremony.
Yesterday.
It was a nice, um, lunch. Which, well, last night, it was kind of one of those great things to obtain a counselor to be at that parent ceremony together, it was very emotional and, uh, but very, very, it's the, the two changes, the guy that all the, the chief, the assistant chief, but also the decision director, that's Joe Russell, also, my relation, retired, uh, I think he was served as well. Put on them, the, the very important cards in the wheel of town, and, uh, with that kind of effort that, that makes up for it. So, um. Just wanted to kind of go a point for a couple of summer nights, so I have to get tomorrow night, the council, of us, of the summer, so I just wondered a lot about that, and that's it, this one? You're over in Montana.
Yes, because they were talking one state, I want to be used, be used, follow you some follow, right?
John.
I think you guys heard from me that.
Uh, I am just pulling up channels to remind myself of the timing for this one, so I put a button up for everybody, uh, the TSKG, uh, group is coming up this past, this, this coming weekend, um, the community fix like at four thirty on Sunday, behind Central School. And then I'm also starting to find a little.
Monday night at six thirty here, they're doing the, they're going to do their, their, uh.
Questions.
Yeah, the TSKD dialogue, we're going to do that, the mayor, the TSKD is signing out, so I'm going to come down, walk home, I'm going to be here. Uh, they've asked me to come to the dinner, be in St. Paul's, and go over, so. If any of you, if you're in chat, I have no idea if this is a tail, but John, I'm hoping to see you later, buddy. Never know.
Uh, and then, fortunately, but you have this.
I'm chair, I will be your chair, sorry.
I'll just, I can all speak to that.
All the time.
I, I suppose.
One reason I'm looking for Luke's there. The spot can be signed, all right?